It is now 6:00 PM and I will call to order the August 14, 2018 meeting of the MISD Board of Trustees. If you would first, we will first engage in a moment of silence, please, and then a pledge to the US flag and Texas flags. But before doing so, I'd like to introduce you to the student who will lead us in those pledges. That student is Lee High School Junior Krista Carrasco. Krista is the Personnel Officer for Lee High Air Force Junior ROTC. Krista participates in the Kitty Hawk Air Society and is also an active member of the Lee High School Orchestra where she plays the viola. More recently, Krista and the Lee High School Top Orchestra came home with the Sweepstakes Award, the highest award available at UIL competition. Krista has earned two academic letters and a letter jacket as a sophomore maintaining a high A average. She has been inducted into the National Junior Honor Society and has also received the President's Education Award for Outstanding Academic Excellence. Krista plans on going to college to receive a degree in criminal justice and then enter the Air Force after she graduates from Lee High School. You'll first, though, join me in a moment of silence and then we'll be led by Cadet Krista Carrasco. Thank you. Carrasco?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Cadet Carrasco. Good luck to you. All right. Agenda item number three, announcements. Mr. Riddick?
Board, I just want to share with our community as well as with you that you've heard several times the work that our team did in regards to launching into this school year. Appreciate all the work that our team members have done with our teaching and learning opportunity that we announced as Elevate. Proud of the work that our Executive Director of Professional Development Jill Rivera did in that work and her team members, some present tonight, that launched and put countless hours into that to make it an incredible two days for our teachers at Lee High School to go through their professional development, to give our opportunity to gather for one last convening with convocation. So kudos to that team and to that work. As well, for our community to be represented with the Lieutenant Governor as I was invited with nineteen other superintendents from around the state to sit with him for several hours to talk through two important topics that will be agenda items that he will present during this legislative session, one being school safety and the other being school finance. We were able to sit and dialogue and get to learn both sides from he, from superintendents, and us, from the Lieutenant Governor, in order to work and partner forward for what could come into this next legislative session. So there'll be more convenings that will occur and proud to be part of that team that got time to spend with him.
Thank you, Mr. Riddick. And then we'd like to echo the congratulations to the pre-start of the school year. Heard lots of positive feedback and congratulations to Ms. Rivera and all the folks that played such an important part of that. I've heard nothing but glowing remarks and a lot of excitement for the school year. Thank you very much. All right, we now turn to public forum. We have a number of speakers who have signed up to address the board this evening in no particular order, but I will start with Chris Gafford. His topic is political correctness and MISD stats. Mr. Gafford, welcome.
Thank you. Just one year now I've been coming up here, since my first trip here, one year since Mr. Riddick started. Since then, we've had one high school principal who overreacted to one song that was played for fifty-six years, even though there were zero was the number of students endangered by Dixie. I'm wondering why you're sitting with the Lieutenant Governor if you mentioned to him that we're cutting out songs to make things safer while you're talking about school safety. But we have had at least three guns taken off MISD campuses, at least two elementary kids sexually assaulted in the classroom, elementary kids. We've had two teachers at Goddard fired for inappropriate behavior. We've had a crossing guard arrested for sexual assault. During all that time, we've had one superintendent who despite what he says is the opposite of transparent, which has led to in the past year, four hundred and eighty-eight professional positions terminated through either resignation or retirements. Four hundred and eighty-eight people y'all lost this year. Seven hundred-plus signatures calling for Mr. Riddick's resignation. That's not a couple of people. That's a lot of people. Countless children moving to charter schools and homeschool, including my youngest son. We have one school board president. Mr. Davis, you should have been removed from your position for your blatantly sexist comments during one of the meetings that you had with Ms. Linscombe. You have a complete lack of passion for the emotionally destroyed kids, mothers, and families who have shared their stories and struggles. You're not fit to serve in that position. Zero is the number of times that this board has allowed a fair discussion about Dixie or any other serious issues, like I've brought up several times, the Guardian program or real ways to keep our kids safe. Twenty-six thousand, that's the number of students y'all are failing. Tens of thousands is the number of taxpayers who deserve better. Now, I understand, Mr. Riddick, this is a very dynamic district with many different challenging aspects. We don't expect y'all to be perfect, but we do expect you to listen. And we expect whenever we bring something to you as our elected representatives that somebody listen. Mr. Bishop listens. He hears us. The rest of y'all, I don't know if I could say the same. It's time for you to listen to the people that come up here and have three measly minutes to say their piece. Because as it is right now, you're not here to think.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gafford. Next, Mr. McAfee, do you wish to address the board?
To the board, Superintendent, and to the audience, I just want to say that I have been greatly charged and emotionally uplifted over the past few days. In fact, I was so charged after watching a snippet of the convocation that I almost reached and got my telephone and dialed in as if I could come back and teach. However, my sciatica nerve told me, no, you don't want to do that. So I didn't do that. But to stand here and, or sit here and watch those young people who walked across those stages, or these particular stages approximately thirty minutes ago within that particular timeframe, it really emotionally uplifted me because it showed me that young people still, with proper guidance and inspiration, will be steadfast and unmovable in their quest to achieve the American dream. And I'm just so proud of those particular young people doing that. And I'm also proud of this particular community because over the past few weeks, I've sat back and watched reports in the Midland Telegram, reported Telegram, especially one in that the county commissioners here thought so much of this particular district and this particular leadership that's in place now. They donated some, I'm not sure, I don't want to be in error, but multi-million dollars.
Five million.
Five million? Yes, sir. I was just so elated by that. And then yesterday, just sitting at home, mostly attending to my sciatic nerve, I had the pleasure of seeing one of the company, or maybe it was a trio of companies that got together and went to South Elementary and took approximately four hundred school packs to the young people to get the year started. That is so amazing because people who have don't realize the challenge that it is for people who have not to come prepared on the first day of school and have supplies and things that you need to get the year started. So I'm just uplifted. Keep doing what you're doing.
All right, thank you, Mr. McAfee. Next, Jennifer Carpenter. Ms. Carpenter, welcome. Your topic is "Thank You." That's a nice topic.
I, just good evening. I just wanted to, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. I came and, I might get emotional about this because I've been really passionate. I think y'all are aware, you know, that the teachers in our district deserve so much. And I just wanted to say thank you to those of you that did respond to my email about what the exit interviews that I conducted and what they came up with and the answers that I did receive. I'm sorry, I'm saying um because I just wasn't prepared. I appreciate, I had two board members that reached out immediately with my response, Mr. Bishop and Mr. Murray. I'm so grateful that you took the time to message me to say that you received it and that you wanted to go over it. It was a very long email. There were a lot of answers. And I know that took a lot of time out of y'all's schedule to read and really absorb the answers that were in those responses because they hurt me to read repeatedly as I typed them up for you guys. And Mr. Davis, you did respond to me and I do appreciate that. I appreciate the fact that y'all took the time to say thank you for the effort that I put in, but that's not why I did it. I did it to just share that we knew what was going on. And I just, I appreciate that y'all are considering the actions that I suggested moving forward. You know, I know that we already have an action and movement with the, with like an exit interview for the staff as they leave, if they resign online. And I think that's a great step forward. And I know Mr. Bishop and Mr. Murray were very cooperative and like moving forward to hopefully get some checks and balances in place, I guess, on campuses to help teachers have a voice on their campus and not be unfair of any kind of retribution. So I just wanted to say thank you because I feel like we need a little more positivity and not so much negativity all the time. That I feel like we do have a couple of pegs in the right places that are really trying to make the right choices for our district. And I do appreciate the time and effort that they all put in. And thank you for, thank you for those that responded to me. I do appreciate that.
All right, thank you, Ms. Carpenter. All right, next up, Leslie Curtis. Topic is special needs students. Welcome, Ms. Curtis.
I would just like to update you on my son. I came here two months ago to tell the board that I was the one who had the special needs student who was seen videotaped in distress curled up in the ball while the parent professional moved him with her foot along the floor like a piece of trash while she was staring at her cellphone all the while with the supervising teacher also staring at her cellphone. Since that time, I've had numerous meetings. Believe it or not, I'm going to thank you too. I'm going to thank Don Miller and Jeff Horner and especially Laura Arthur. This woman is incredible. She's a saint. She has been working diligently to help my son. I do, however, want to bring out something. Mr. Riddick, in your interview with Jay Hendricks, you said you wanted the hard questions. You wouldn't shy away from him. This is my question. Yes, that aide was removed from the room. Do you know where she is now? She's the face of Midland High School. She's sitting at the front desk. The woman that treated my child like a piece of trash, my child that can't speak for himself, is now at the front desk of Midland High. I was told last week that I now have an appointed assistant principal that I can go to, which I'm very appreciative of, but that I didn't need to go to the office. I don't think that's right. I don't think, because you're leaving that employee in that office, that I should avoid that. My son can't speak up, as I told you that before, but I can. I'm going to continue to fight this battle despite the wonderful things that Mr. Horner's done, Laura Arthur, and Don Miller. I'm going to continue to fight. I'm not going to give up, Mr. Riddick. I've contacted the US Office of Civil Rights. I did not sign the resolution. I've contacted TEA with the teachers and aides that I'm in question about. And I just wanted the board to know, I will not give up this fight. If that's the kind of representation you want of your high school, then you really need to rethink this. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Curtis. All right, next, Pastor Barack Stanford. There's no topic listed, though. Mr. Stanford, welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To the board, Mr. Riddick. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. I'm here with a recently formed group by the name of Support Education. And we do support education. And along with that, I feel that you as a board deserve our support as well. I know your jobs are difficult. I know you have a lot on your plate. I know you have a lot going on. So with that being said, I would like to place on your hearts and on your minds the fact that in our education system, in our curriculum, there's nothing to educate our students as far as Black history is concerned other than perhaps once a year during Black History Month. I would like to see something put on the curriculum to enhance the education as far as Black history is concerned so that all of our students, not only Black, but Black, White, Red, Yellow, Green, can know the history of this country, know the history of how the struggle and what the contributions to this country were made by African-Americans. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stanford. And I say no particular order, but I do try to lump the speakers together. Ms. Kirk, are you also, are you on that same topic or a different one? I've got two others I know that are on that topic, so let me, let me come back to you. Or at least it looks like they are. Next, let me ask Akila Watson. Her topic is Support Education. Ms. Watson, welcome.
I would like to thank the board members for the opportunity to be able to come and speak this evening in support of education. My name is Akila Watson. I reside at forty-four three Palmer Drive, Midland, Texas. I speak in behalf of Support Education and every parent, teacher, and human being that would want to treat others the way they would want to be treated. The self, in support of our school board, superintendent, staff, and the teachers who are working so hard to get our children educated, to learn to be better citizens and lead our community and around the world. I recognize the fact that our children are our responsibility as parents, to raise them, to teach them the way that they should treat others before they have to come to the school to be taught how to do it. The teachers have a hard enough time just trying to get their curriculum through. And I will first start at home, and let me follow my notes, that we as parents teach our children to learn unless we lead them to TV shows full of violence, rage, and they begin to act out in what they see. So we don't want our children to be raised by violence and TV shows and things that will cause them to be anything other than upstanding citizens. So for the parents, if we would take control of our children at home and began to teach our children right from wrong, we might not be faced with so much bullying and so much hatred that is being projected in our schools today. And also, I would like to know if there are positions on the board where bullying is concerned and what would your criteria be to be able to serve on that board and if there are spots available? Mr. Riddick?
I have a team member get with you. Her name is Ms. Teresa Moore. And she'll touch base with you just shortly after you sit down.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Watson. Next, Shirley Howard. Topic, Support for Education. Ms. Howard, welcome.
Good evening. Giving honor to God and recognizing the rest of you. My name is Shirley Howard. I'm here on behalf, as the organizer of the Community Supporting Education. And we came together because we wanted to support MISD. I want to say thank you all for coming out to the meeting a couple of weeks ago. We appreciate your appearance and we appreciate your input. However, there are some questions that the community want some answers to. I know some things you cannot address here tonight, but we appreciate you addressing them by email or whichever way if you cannot answer them tonight. We know bullying come in many forms and it's not just up on children. It happens to adults as well. However, we're saying, Mr. Riddick, why are you being bullied to the fact that a group has come together and called for your resignation? However, on that same note, in speaking with the representative for mom, she informed me highly that your resignation call has not been rescinded, which this group in this community had believed the paper that it had been. Because we steadfast and support the initiative that you and your team have put together for this coming year. You've only been here a year. You've done a great job in our eyesight. However, the community is very disturbed. Not only Black, we're talking Brown, Black, and White. They feel you have done a wonderful job. I heard the gentleman earlier give you negative vibe. That's okay. Everybody have the right to their opinion. But that is one of the important questions that we need an answer to to help us move forward. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Howard, thank you. All right, Ms. Kirk, I come back to you. I'm sorry for the start and stop. Heidi Kirk. Topic, Support for Positive Change. Ms. Kirk, welcome.
First, I want to just thank you all for allowing me this time to speak. And so, good evening. Thank you to all of you who are here, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Riddick, and community members. My name is Heidi Kirk. I have six children. Yes, I did say six, and yes, they are all mine. Three of them are still currently attending MISD schools. As a parent, community member, and former educator with the district, I feel the need to speak up about recent events in our community, not as part of a specific group, but as a community member. I speak today on behalf of myself and many other parents in the community who are concerned about the state of affairs in our district, who are concerned about things that have been said and not said, done and not done by both the district and the community. We're concerned. We believe our district needs to strive for change and we still believe working together with our district leaders is an option and it's an important plan of action. I personally am committed to being a part of that plan of action, which is why I'm here. As a mother of six very different children with very different needs ranging from high-functioning autism to GT, I want to say I support the direction the district is headed. This past year, I have had the benefit of participating in multiple district committees and I see positive changes taking place. I see a system of great schools taking form and a district of innovation plans being implemented. And I see superintendent, superintendent and district staff who are human beings and a board that are human beings, just like me, who deserve grace, respect, and an opportunity to show us what they are made of. I know there are many in our community who question the district's future and with good reason. It is obvious from the Katamba survey, the teacher survey, and the publicly voiced parental concerns that we have a lot of work ahead of us. But I truly believe we are headed in the right direction. Over the last twelve months, I saw teachers, students, community members, administrators, and central office staff come together to explore innovative ways of meeting student needs. I saw a call for people in and out of our community to propose entire schools focused on meeting those needs of our diverse student population. I saw Elise Cale notice a look during a meeting and take the time to ask for feedback about what teachers and the community saw that the administration may not. I saw Woodrow Bailey take time from his current hiring frenzy, and we know that that's important on our agenda, to meet with a concerned parent who had feedback on how we can improve the quality of life for our teachers because as a former teacher, it's a concern. And most recently, I saw Mr. Riddick eat ice cream with his wife and take time to greet people that he recognized despite public criticism of his performance. Thank you. I could continue about the wonderful things I have witnessed over the last year, but my friends were sure to remind me that I only have three minutes. I might be close to that. If you ask those that know me, education is a topic very dear to my heart. I may never stop talking if you give me the time to do it, but I digress. Instead, I will bring my time to almost an end by saying, I call on the community, whether or not they have a child in our schools, to take time and invest in the changes our district is making by participating in committees and serving on PTAs. Make your voice heard by being a catalyst for change. Be a force for good for our kids and set a positive example about how to bring change to the world they live in. Commit to being part of the positive plan of action. And finally, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Riddick, there are many mothers, fathers, grandparents, and community members, many of which are in here and many who are not, who demand to see change and still support the direction we are headed. We do not need resignations or token gestures. We need solid changes to transform our district into one we can be proud of. We call on you to not only stay the course but to increase efforts to eliminate bullying in our school, to improve work conditions for teachers and other staff members who make a positive difference in the lives of our kids, and to continue to reinvent what education looks like in Midland, in Texas, and in our country because we're part of that with our system of great schools. We are here to work with you to drive the change the district so desperately needs. Tell us what you need so we can help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kirk. All right, next up, I think we have possibly two speakers have lined up. Elizabeth Dice and Naimai Singh, I'm not sure. Topic, I believe, is daughter safety. I apologize for pronunciation. What is your name, sir?
It's Naimai.
Naimai. All right, Mr. Naimai, sorry. Welcome.
It's fine. Had it all my life. I mean, I'm not really sure what to say right now. Not that I'm at a loss for words or anything like that. It's after hearing this gentleman's statement and everything like that. It's just that I'm not even sure if what I'm saying here would be reached or make it past this room. He spoke that, you know, there was two incidents this year where it was elementary schools that were sexually assaulted in the classroom, one being my daughter. And so far, everything that has happened, nothing's really been taking place. It was, for lack of better words, it's been getting swept on the rug. I was told that her case got slipped through a crack. If it wasn't for that and the outreach of the public, that nothing would have been done. Now, I'm standing here like, I don't even know if I can believe anything that will be happening after here, if anything would be more into the future, if it were to be looked at not only for my daughter but for the children that it's happened to before or even in the future cases if it does happen. I mean, it says in your name, Board of Trustees, but the last thing I have is trust. I haven't been in this Midland for a long time, but so far, I mean, I don't know any of you or anything of your background, but so far, there's nothing that I see that I can trust. It's just, I've been getting lied to, getting the runaround, and yet still, nothing has been done.
I'm sorry to hear that. And we're not familiar with your circumstances, but we will look into it. Thank you very much.
Before I go, she does want to say something.
Okay. And what is her name? Is there Elizabeth?
No, it's Prenaya.
Okay. Okay.
You want to tell? If you don't want to, it's okay.
I want to get justice for me and other little girls what happened to me and for them, because they had it too.
Thank you very much. All right, that concludes our public forum. Next is our consent agenda. 5A, Board Meeting Minutes of our regular board meeting on July 16, 2018, and our special meeting and workshop on July 30, 2018. 5B is our financials. 5C is our monthly investment report. 5D, monthly expenditures. 5E, our request for bid proposals. E1 is bid copy for, copy paper for warehouse. Number 2 is Special Education Professional Services. Number 3 is Technology Services and Software. Number 4 is Dental Plan Administration Services. Number 5 is Third Party Administrator and Reinsurance Services. And number 6 is Charter Bus Services. Each of those proposals are on pages 35 through 49 of our board packet. Also, Consent Item F is our 2018-2019 Student Handbook. 5G is our 2018-2019 Student Code of Conduct. 5H is our Team Court Agreement. 5I is our Personnel Appointments. 5J is a Board Gift. And all of those matters in their totality are on pages between 10 and page 202 of our board packet. Board, are there any of these items that need to be polled for any reason whatsoever? Hearing none, Consent Items 5A through J will be deemed approved by consent. All right, next, our District Reports. 6A, Board Goals. Information begins on page 203 of our board packet. Mr. Jones, welcome.
Good evening, Board Members, President Davis, Vice President Bishop, Trustees, Mr. Riddick. I would first like to share with you Board Goal 3.0. Board Goal 3.0 is specific to the four-year graduation rate will increase from 85% for the graduating class of 2015. This is reported in November of 2016 to 95% for the graduating class of 2020, which is reported in November 2021. Our annual target for the 17-18 school year was 89%. I am happy to be here and inform you that the rate that we are sharing with you tonight is 89.8. We exceeded our annual target of 89%.
Congratulations. Please put up the next slide so we can see it graphically displayed for us. Thank you. That's terrific. Congratulations to all.
I'd like to commend the work done by our campuses, our campus administrators, our teachers, our central office team that works in Mary Janisak and Heard Department, the folks that help us participate during the recovery walk at the beginning of every school year. All of that work coming together helps us reach this goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. On the, you going to talk about Goal Progress Measure 2.4 now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great.
At this time, I would also like to share with you a goal progress measure that's specific to the percentage of students in grades 3 through 8 who score on or above grade level in reading, and we utilize iStation and iEspanol and score proficient or advanced in math utilizing Imagine Math. We are using this year as a baseline year for this particular goal progress measure. I also want to share that the 6th through 8th grades were new implementing iStation this year, and our grades 3 through 8 were also new to implementing Imagine Math. This was formerly Think Through Math. Our established baseline for 2017-18 is 44%. We will definitely need to work along your side in developing a smart goal around this particular goal progress measure, because this is a baseline year.
And is this one that would be measured at the end of the school year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And do we have yet scheduled a workshop to deal, to address?
We have, we have not. We've put out a few dates and conflicts keep coming up.
That's right.
We still need to establish a date for that.
All right, yeah, we definitely need to establish a date to do this.
Will our approach be any different to addressing this challenge?
Addressing continued professional development around the use of iStation. As I mentioned before, this particular tool that we're utilizing, 6th through 8th grade is new, was new this coming year. So we expect that we will have more experience in how to utilize those tools and continue to, and we will, we will expect to see continued growth in those areas. Yes, sir.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Jones about this item? We look forward to the workshop when we get that scheduled, hopefully soon. All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. Next, I think you're still up there for District Report 6B, our Academic Update. The information begins on page 210 of our board packet.
Board Members, in a previous update, we shared with you our forecasting around campuses that we felt like were forecast to be met standard, campuses that were forecast to have a challenge and to be close. And we also shared with you one particular campus that was unlikely to make it. Since then, we did receive our CAT files from TEA. So we're able to comb through that information and do some calculations. And I am here to report that, I know previous report indicated that we forecast to have about 12 campuses that were close. We narrowed that down through internal calculations to seven, but we are sitting with five IR campuses moving forward for next year. Those five IR campuses are Houston, Lamar, Scarborough, Travis, and Washington. We also previously shared with you that our predicted rating for the district would be a C rating. That did come to fruition. It came back one point higher than what we expected, so that will be a 73C. And this information will be going public tomorrow. I would also like to share out that we received 21 distinctions based on the report from TEA. Those campuses include Early College High School receiving three distinction designations, Lee Freshman receiving one distinction designation, Millen Freshman receiving two, Bonham receiving four. We're very proud of all of our campuses, but I want to specifically bring attention to Bonham. It's one of our higher economically disadvantaged campuses, and it comes in first. When you separate Carver out of the equation, it's leading the pack in academic performance, and they are receiving four distinction designations. We're very proud of that work. And of course, the leader of that campus is now going to be at South, leading the efforts at South Elementary in Juan Dominguez. So if you get a chance to pat him on the back, please do, and his team at Bonham. Bush received one distinction designation.
Mr. Jones, wait, I think Mr. Marquez has a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you, but he hadn't finished it, but... So are we going to get an opportunity here in the next board meeting to do those recognitions? I think that'll be real important.
We definitely want to recognize these accomplishments. It's really a big deal to us. It's a big deal to them. And we need to make sure that our teachers and our leaders of those campuses see that we celebrate those accomplishments. Yes, sir.
Well, it's real important for our community to hear the positive change. There's still work to be done. One thing I've come to realize is that there's a lot of work to be done on a constant basis. It's not a, it's an evolution process constantly. And if it's not from the, obviously, the educational side, it's from the legislative side. So I just commend everybody. Because the Longstar Governance, which I have a lot of faith in, that we've worked on as a whole, as a board as a whole, was district, and I think that's paying a lot of rewards.
Yes, sir. Carver received six distinction designations. Franks received one. Jones received one. Parker received one. And our campus that was in its, going into its sixth year as IR will be met standard, and that is South. And they're also receiving one distinction designation. I applaud the team at South as well, and I applaud the leadership that we have now hired on to run our EL department in Letty Amaya. I also want to share that, yes, we have five improvement required campuses. We were forecasting to have seven, and the work started as soon as we conducted our own analysis of that information. So we've already met with all of those identified campuses and had accountability review sessions to sure up the knowledge and capacity around the new accountability system. The rules were changing this past year as we were going through, and we were receiving even changes and updates there toward the end in May. But now we know the rules of the game, and we're going to proceed accordingly. We're also conducting root cause analysis at all of those campuses to ensure we start to peel the onion back and get to the root cause of some of the challenges we're facing at those specific campuses. So all of those needs are typically unique. We will identify those and provide support around those areas as well as the challenges that we face as a district across the district and make those adjustments as well.
Will we get information relative to how close those five campuses may have come to avoiding being classified as IR?
Yes, yes, sir. We will provide that information to you.
I'd like to see that information.
Yes, sir.
As an example for one of the campuses that we have, there's a rule that came in late in the Accountability Manual that created what's known as a forced fail. And so although the campus would have been a met standard, but a met standard act, if you were using the language coming out of the Texas Education Agency of an A, B, C, D, or what could be qualified as an F school, it would have made a D standard. But because of where they were positioned in other areas, they were, in essence, forced to fail and become an IR school. In our work that Mr. Jones is talking through already, we begun some of that work, in essence, as soft launches to build our progress and our effort. So you'll see at Sam Houston, the transition of the entire campus leading into the school year, what we're being, what we're able to establish. You hear what that performance looks like in the previous year. The goal was, what can we do in the oncoming year? We've gone to our Travis community to talk with them about the opportunity to partner with one of the stronger performing charters, one of the highest performing charters in the state of Arizona, who does work in Nevada and wants to partner with us here in Texas. And they want to be, they want to partner with us first. So the opportunity to begin that dialogue with transitioning and innovation of partnership and development of what we can do with our next set of campuses. We have an entire administration that's taken over one school, which is entirely disappointing to hear that that school would fall into that area in regards to their performance, knowing the community and knowing the transitions that come in. And so we have a new leadership team that is coming from a school that developed a high standard of performance to take on that particular school. And so excited about that new administration that's set there. So the goal never, the work never ends. There's continued work that we have to go after. Our team knows it, and they're accountable, everyone in this room, as well as the campuses. We all own that performance and where we're at. The work that we're building now goes into this school year in regards to knowing that for the next five years, the accountability standards are set, the work that we know and adopt and can move on. So we've done some work based on the previous accountability system to look at, if we were still under the same metrics of our previous accountability system, where would we fall? We saw, based on some data that our team was pushing through, that one of our campuses listed, which would have been one of our lower performing schools, would have cleared the accountability, and that school would have cleared. All others that were above them would have cleared also. So we would be having a multi-different, a very different conversation in regards to what this looks like. So we know that we can make progress. We know once the standards are set that we begin to catch and improve this work. Our work with our teachers leading up into the school year is a part of that. You heard reference to culture. You heard reference to staff ensuring that we go after that support to develop the work that we have to do.
The conversations that we're having right now with teams are focused on, you know, those conversations go deep and wide, but they include two core topics, and that's the instructional process and culture. The, one of the basic ways we continue to get better as a district is that we get better at the science and art of teaching through the instructional process, identifying what those essential standards are, developing assessments around those essential standards, having a plan for intervention, and ensuring that we have a plan for enrichment as well. With this new system, it really puts an emphasis on meets and masters. So not just passing the assessment, but making sure you get students to show progress towards that meets and masters level. We're also spending a lot of time talking about culture, and that's continuing the growth mindset, ensuring that all kids can learn and no excuses mentality as we approach this work. I'm sorry, Mr. Kennedy?
No, no, no. I just, go ahead. I didn't want to interrupt you. I just wanted to say thank you. Yes, we have five IR campuses this year, but we have a lot of campuses that are not IR campuses, and a lot of credit needs to go to the teachers, the principals, the administrators, and everyone that's pitched in to try to do this. We have a battleship here. We have a huge organization. It doesn't turn around on a dime, but we've started to turn. We've made the move. And I want us to be happy about the achievement that we have made. We have a way to go. There's no question about that. I'm not happy with any IR campuses. But we're moving in the right direction, and we need everyone in this community to know that we are moving in the right direction. And thank you all, teachers and administrators and principals.
I have one other area that I'd like to touch on, just to keep you informed around academics, to let you know that we are listening and we are working alongside our campus teams, our teachers, our campus administrators. But I need you to understand that in order for us to move forward, we must evaluate student learning. And there are a variety of ways to do that. In addition to the differentiated methods teachers utilize on a daily basis, the district as a whole uses several standardized ways of checking for understanding, whether it's grade level, campus, district. We utilize a couple of tools and resources embedded in the Board Goals, GPMs and CPMs, and those tools are iStation, iEspanol, I just mentioned those earlier, Fanta San Penel, we call it FMP, Imagine Math, of course, district checkpoints, and of course, we look at STAR and EOC performance. I do want you to know that we are reducing the number of assessments that we're giving throughout the year. We've made some adjustments from six to nine-week assessments via district checkpoints. So the overall assessments will go down so teachers can spend more time teaching the curriculum. We're also moving away from mandatory STAR release tests in the fall. We will be giving a STAR release test in the spring, but it will be in place of the 27th week district checkpoint. So I want you to know overall, we're listening. We're working with our teachers. We are reducing some of the assessment opportunities so they can... We are reducing some of the assessment opportunities so they can spend time on teaching and not assessing all the time. We still feel like we have enough assessments in place, uh, to meet the needs of of reporting and monitoring associated with, uh, ensuring that student growth is still occurring.
And just to share with you also, Board, as I've had conversations, had a breakfast with six principals invited, if I could show up, one was with her family and could not make it and has rescheduled. But in that conversation with these principals, it's about autonomy, uh, getting to the point of what are things that we get in the way of that you need us to move out of the way? And so you heard campuses that have met levels of distinctions, and distinctions are, in essence, great qualifying standards that the state gives you for your performance. It's like a star when you, um, receive that on your grading paper when you were in elementary, in essence. It just it shows that you are one of the best in this particular area. So I've had those conversations with Midland High, I had those conversations with Carver, with Bowie, with Abel.
Midland freshman.
Midland freshman, uh, and General Franks to say, these are things that we want to do and that we want to pursue, and if you find that there are things that, um, allow you to get further faster, then what are the things that this team has to do in order to make that happen? Bonham would have also been in that category, but we've taken that outstanding principle to continue to work at South, and it has a new administrator. So we want to begin grounded in that work that Mr. Dominguez has established before we think about adding, um, that campus and its school into the fold. But those conversations are going to grow further and further to the point that schools will determine whether they need the team that sits in the audience in order to help them move their work forward. Uh, there's conversations around assessment. You see the adjustment being made there. There's conversations about the curriculum and the pacing. Uh, you see, uh, work being done there. We've done the work on the zero-based budgeting that allows campus principals to tell us what they need, uh, which started the first leg in on the autonomy journey. So we're moving further and faster into that work so that we can input our effort and energy to those schools that need us the most, so that we know when we do that, we rise with success. We went all in on South, and I'm proud of the work that South has done, the leadership, the executive director and the team, uh, to know that when we do that, we yield great results. And so thank you, team, for that work.
Um, I wanted to add another comment to, um, probably the wrong part of the conversation, but I want to thank for the IM MISD, um, during convocation. And I think that, you know, a message I've been spreading lately is that, uh, you know, we have, uh, district employees and that I believe in our district employees and that they're these people that work here are professionals, are people. And I've been spreading that message that our employees here are professional people, but they're also human beings. And, um, I just want to our community, our staff to know that, you know, uh, I'm trying to speak on their behalf and, uh, uh, carry that point that, uh, we are not perfect, you know? Nobody is. But we look we look for that advantage every day to to get better and to move forward. So I just wanted to say that, that I really appreciate that IM MISD, uh, because, you know, as a as a whole, that's who we are. And, uh, you know, when, uh, when things are said that, uh, about Midland ISD, um, that I find incorrect, I tend to, uh, push back and say, hey, listen, uh, these are great people, and I believe in them. So I just wanted to say that.
From the teaching and learning team, from our superintendent, and from from all of the teachers that we have been meeting with over the last few days, um, I want to send a message to the board and to the community that, yes, we will be a C district. We're not happy with that. We shouldn't be happy with that. The community should not be happy with that. We're going to do everything we can to continue the work around instructional process and culture, to continue to move up thresholds, to move that from a C to a B and eventually an an A. And we can do that, um, with support from central office support services and with teachers coming together and making sure that we have systems and structures in place to ensure they can get to the work. And if they share with us any barriers that exist, it's our job to get the barriers out of the way so they can get to the work needed with kids.
You're not being happy with where we are in that regard. I want to remind you, those magnet schools were put in place to become pace setters academically in MISD. And I am very concerned that Washington has fallen short as a pace setter. And I hope that in light of where Washington is, we will make a very close assessment of where other magnets are to make sure that they don't fall below the bar. I am very concerned about Washington.
The the Washington team's very concerned as well. It's one of the very first campuses that we met with met with, uh, to review their accountability, to go through the details of what it means, and to eventually conduct a root cause analysis. Um, the work has begun. It's tough work. Uh, we don't like where we are. I don't expect for us to be here next year.
Well, I hope so, Mr. Jones. I know that it it must be discouraging for those on those five campuses to be labeled improvement required. Uh, unfortunately, the label does not also indicate all the good work that's being done on those campuses. But any IR campuses in MISD is unacceptable.
Yes, sir.
The good news is, is that I hope that instead of discouragement, they will be encouraged by the stories of Bonham and South. It can be done, and then I'm sure it will be done. And Godspeed to you and your staff and all the campus leadership and principals and staff, teachers on those campuses. We're looking for great reports next year.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Jones? All right. Now turning to agenda item six C, financial update. Ms. Moss, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Good evening, Mr. Davis, board members, and Mr. Riddick. I have five topics that we want to cover, uh, for you tonight, briefly. The first topic that we're going to talk about is our fiscal year 2017, 2018, and I just want to update you on where we are briefly. Um, that fiscal year ended on June 30th because we changed our fiscal year, uh, back in October. The final trial balance is going to be due to our external auditors one day next week, and our accounting department is working on posting journal entries and posting receivables so that we can get that bottom line for the auditors. Um, we will keep the board informed periodically, um, through updates, email updates, and our Skyward financial software. This was our first full complete ye- uh, monthly period that we did on it, and it makes the information easier. Um, and you'll notice that we it looks a little different for you, and, uh, we'll talk about that on the twenty seven, twenty eighteen, twenty eighteen nineteen information. The fiscal year eighteen nineteen, we ended the month of July with ninety-eight point eight million in cash and short-term investments. Our interest rates again ranged from one point eight five to two point two three percent compared to last month's range of one point eight one to two sixteen. Uh, the interest earned for all the funds for July totaled a hundred and sixty-four thousand, just over a hundred and sixty-four thousand. July financials represent the first month of the twenty eighteen nineteen fiscal year. We made some changes to the investment report, the monthly expenditure report, and the financial report. Some of the changes were purely cosmetic, um, but we hope that they will make the reports a little easier for you to read and to follow along. Uh, on the investment reports, our activity funds were added to that report. You might see the amount of one point six million dollars, where in the past we have not presented those on the financials, but they are a part of the investments and a part of, uh, dollars for the district. So we, uh, started to include those with this fiscal year. On the monthly expenditure report, it now includes all expenditures for the district, and they are grouped together and totaled by fund. We made only minor changes again cosmetically to to the financial reports. On the corrected copy that you received tonight, you will note a change in the wording on the bottom line of each fund presented. It now reads excess deficiency of revenues over expenditures in place of the net change in fund balance. Uh, there are entries that are made on a monthly basis to determine fund balance that are not made on a monthly basis to determine fund balance. So you'll see that terminology once a month in the, I mean, once a year in the annual The next topic is our twenty eighteen nineteen tax rate. Uh, the Midland Central Appraisal District sent the certification of twenty eighteen appraisal role on July twenty-third. The estimated total taxable value for twenty eighteen was certified at twenty-four point one billion, and the budgeted value was twenty-two point two billion. The certified amounts result in an estimated tax levy of two hundred and seventy million. The maintenance and operations levy is estimated at two fifty-one. The interest in sinking levy is estimated at nineteen point seven million. The certified levy will be provided by the appraisal district in October after any adjustments from the appraisal review board based on any protested properties. Based on the budget amounts for tax revenue, the district could recognize an increase of approximately eighteen million dollars, net of a five million dollar increase to chapter forty-one or recapture expenditures for the current year. This increase in taxable values also results in an increase in the chapter forty-one payments, of course, for the twenty nineteen, for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year. Um, and we're estimating that at an additional twenty-six million dollars or a total estimate of eighty-eight million dollars in recapture for the nineteen twenty year. So we need to keep that, uh, uh, in mind as well. For the funds that we're generating based on this, uh, the superintendent and staff will review some of the board priorities that we went over, uh, with you in the budget workshops to determine which of these priorities we would like to focus on with any of the excess funds that we're realizing, uh, based on the taxable value increase. We'll be revisiting the bus purchases, health and wellness, innovation, attendance incentives, and other benefits. And in addition, we'll look at teacher, uh, retention initiatives as well. Uh, these numbers are soft estimates. I want to make sure that we we we're understanding that, and they will not be final until we look at student enrollment. So tomorrow we'll start to have an idea of where our student count comes in and how it affects our chapter forty-one. Um, and in the and the bottom line, we'll know exactly what excess that we have to work with. Um, we'll be asking you later in the meeting to adopt a a tax rate of one point oh four oh oh five for maintenance and operations and eight cents for interest in sinking. The total tax rate we will ask you to adopt is a dollar twelve or one point one two zero zero five. This rate is a decrease over last year of three quarters of a penny. However, the law requires a language in the motion to compare the total tax rate of a dollar twelve to an effective tax rate calculated by the appraisal district of a dollar two, making the language somewhat confusing. The effective tax rate is a tax rate that would produce the same amount of taxes if applied to the same properties that are taxed in the prior year. When appraisal values increase, the effective tax rate should decrease. So again, overall, the tax rate decreased, uh, and we were glad to be able to do that on the INS side, but the rate in which the law requires to be calculated and compared to the total rate effectively increased. So that's why you'll see the a little difference in the language.
And I appreciate you, uh, going through that part of it, that we're actually having a reduction, because it it is confusing. It was confusing to me, so I'm sure it's confusing to our public that we're actually reducing it and not increasing it. So, thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Moss, I want one question. Uh, in our current year's budget, we are estimated to send fifty-seven point five million dollars to Austin as part of the Robin Hood payment. And earlier you mentioned what your estimated figure for next year was going to be, it was going to go from an estimated amount of fifty-seven million to what?
Eighty-eight.
Eight-eight million?
Eighty-eight million is for the nineteen twenty year. That fifty-seven million that we budgeted actually increased because our taxable values increased, so that amount went up as well. So we're looking at sixty-two million for this current year.
Okay. So the current year.
Is going to increase.
We'll know more tomorrow in the in the coming weeks, but.
Right, right.
The budgeted amount was fifty-seven five. Due to the increase in certified values, that amount is going to increase to estimated to be sixty-two million.
Yes.
And go up to eighty-eight million next year.
For next year, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And of course, we know that that number changes during the year. Um, just as in this year, we started the year with thinking that it would be thirty-eight, forty-two million. It actually has come down to, um, thirty-eight million based on the student enrollment.
This past year?
This past year, yes.
Right, okay. Not this coming year. Okay, right.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions on the tax rate for eighteen nineteen?
I'd like to hear some good news. What about your next item?
The and I would just wanted to mention the fact that that money that that that's money that the state requires us to send back to them. So I know a lot of people are like, why do you send the money? We're required to send them the money. So it's not a choice from MISD to send that money to them. It's it's part of the state finance system, uh, which has been declared broken, but, uh, that's required by law, so, uh, just want to put that out there.
Okay. So our next item is the twenty seventeen eighteen first financial rating, and most of you are already aware, the official preliminary seventeen eighteen school first report rating the district received from the Texas Education Agency on the eighth. We received ninety-two out of a possible one hundred points, resulting in a letter grade of A and a superior rating. Um, we did not receive the full points on indicator six, seven, and eight. And so we reviewed those items, um, and, um, looked at our audit report to make sure that they were okay, and we didn't need to appeal those items. Uh, they are calculated correctly, and we will strive to, um, increase, uh, that rating from a ninety-two to a hundred points as as best we can. We're putting, um, uh, streamlining processes, processes, putting things in place to to help us get that rating up.
So you're not going to appeal it?
No, sir. I don't think we can. We've looked at the audit report, and it the numbers are 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 correct.
Well, I'd just like to say I I think you should be commended along with the finance committee for reaching this goal so soon.
Yeah. And I wanted to add to that, too. We talk a lot about how the academic side of this ship moves really slowly, and, um, in one year, uh, with your guidance and leadership and your team's work, we've made a drastic improvement in our finances of MISD, and your group is highly should be highly commended for the work you've done and the way that that's come going from a ninety-two this year from a seventy-two last year. And I think it's something we can feel good about, and it it should show to the community that we are serious about finances and taking care of their money. Um, the one thing I wanted to make about, uh, Robert's comment and your discussion about the the effective tax rate is the state is going to request or going to take our money regardless. So if we lower the rate down to get it to what the effective rate would be, a zero change, we're still paying them the full amount. So all we're doing is cutting into our pocket. So when people say that, we the rate's not gone up, our our rate, but what we're going to pay what we're going to receive is going to be better, and that's just because if we drop it, we're still going to get penalized. And then what we need to do is we we have a net eighteen, maybe eighteen million for next year. We go wisely with how we spend that toward these incentives in Group B and Group C, Tier C and Tier, uh, B and C, uh, how we spend that. But we also got to think about what do we put back to cover the eighty-eight million coming next year?
Exactly.
And so I just want to draw attention to that, but I you all have done a fabulous job.
And thank you, Mr. Murray. Um, and I'd like to say it's a team effort, Financial Services. We have a good team. We put a a good team together, uh, but we've also branched out to the other departments in the district. Um, it takes them getting on board and and and, uh, accepting some of our challenges to do some things differently. And so I applaud, uh, the whole staff. It's been a team effort for us to get to that point. Uh, we're not where we want to be. We still have some things that we want to, uh, do differently, um, and so we'll we'll move forward with those. Our next item is financial risk assessment, and I'm going to bring, uh, Ms. Carla Martin. She's our executive director of Financial Services to, um, go over that with you. It's a new item that we started this year. It's a new item that we started this year.
Good evening, Mr. Davis, Board members, and Mr. Riddick. I wanted to share with you the financial risk assessment process that we'll be performing for this school year. So first I want, we can talk about what is risks. And we, in our terms, we like to say that's the possibility of an event occurring that will have an effect on achieving our objectives. And usually that's measured in terms of impact and likelihood. I like to think of it, what could go wrong? So what's the likelihood that a specific risk is going to occur? How severe could that be? How quickly will that affect the district and for how long? Annually, a district-wide risk assessment should be performed so that we can identify the potential risks that the district may face. I know for us, a dis, a, a risk assessment hasn't been conducted for the district in the past because usually this is an internal audit function, but we believe that it's important to perform this risk assessment so that in order that we can have, you know, identify what we need to work on and also have an effective internal control system. So the first step that we did was we develop, we needed to identify the risk, the district's risk profile. And that would just include areas and processes that we have, that have a potential for impacting the district. Then the second step was we need, we created our, developed our assessment criteria. Based on how you measure risk, we split those into our impact factors and then also our likelihood factors. And within the impact factors, we've identified the financial, that we would have to look at would be the financial impact, any compliance issues, the criticality of that unit and adverse publicity. So a financial impact, we're looking at, you know, considering the overall financial impact of that process, the dollars involved, and what would that impact be to the district if inappropriate activity were to occur? For compliance, we would have to consider the complexity and volume of transactions that were required for compliance requirements. And what would that impact be if we were to receive penalties, fines, litigations, or even loss of funding sources because of compliance issues? Criticality is more of what would the impact of the unit be if it's unable to provide its service within a required timeframe and/or at an expected level? And then adverse publicity is just what is the impact if, of negative public exposure related to that process? For likelihood, we looked at the four factors of control environment, organizational structure, complexity of transactions, and audit history. So for control environment, just in that term of what could go wrong, what could go wrong given the current control environment? And that would mean existing internal controls, existing processes and procedures, and with the management experience of the people involved, and any other historical problems that have occurred. We want to look at what is the likelihood of fraud, waste, or abuse based on the current control environment? For organizational structure, a lot of it is really, have there been any significant changes in that unit's management personnel or in how they are operating? Complexity of transactions would be what could go wrong given the, how complex transactions are occurring, the amount of time it takes, the number of steps, those issues. And then audit history, we want to, we're going to look at when was the last time an audit was performed in this, in this unit? And also the results of those audits? And what's the likelihood that any findings would occur again and those findings not being corrected in a timely manner? So those are the criteria that we've developed. And now our next step is to assess and categorize those risks. We'll be categorizing them in a high, medium, or low in both impact and likelihood. And so a high would be, a high impact is that the potential for a material impact would be on the district's earnings or assets or just our reputation is really high. And then a high likely, a high likelihood would be, is there's a high probability that the risk will occur. So a low would be low probability that this risk could occur and that probably the impact would either be minor in size or limited in scope. This would be, the assessment would be working with other areas so we could gather more information on how relevant that is to the factor. Once we've assessed and categorized those risks, then we would have an overall risk for that process. And that would help, and help us identify what are the areas we need to look at and then develop a review plan on what we kind of just need to have a closer lens at. So we just wanted to share that with you and we are now looking at, we're at the third stage. Any questions?
Oh, it sounds fabulous. I mean, it sounds like a, a new tool and, and, you know, this is what a lot of the big companies do and I'm glad to see it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next, district report, 6D, innovation update, system of great schools. Ms. Cale, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, President Davis, School Board, Mr. Riddick. Thank you for letting me present this evening. Since the July board meeting, we have had listen and learns, planning sessions with multiple entities. We've issued the call for quality schools, requests for information, held staff sessions on that, and submitted and received some information on our Transformation Zone Planning Grant. What I want to do is give you some good news this evening with a little drama built in. So just for you, Mr. Murray. So when we look at this information, we, we started out with some TNTP funding in the fall. We've had, from the Education Foundation, we've had a report of nearly $2 million of support from across our community. Our Transformation Zone Planning Grant was $450,000. Our PTEC Planning Grant was $25,000. We've received funding to support our FAFSA process for our students of $10,000. We had our Grow Your Own Grant of $106,000 and we have teachers working on that. You will meet them next month. We have our School Fund Transformation Planning Grant, which is in conjunction with Midland College, where we have received $300,000. We, of course, have received $5 million from the County Commissioners Court. And we just found out that we have received $5.5 million for the Transformation Zone Implementation Grant for multiple campuses for a grand total of nearly $14 million coming into the district just this school year.
Ms. Cale, I'm going to stop you right there. This is fabulous work. And so before you get into the work, I just want to say that this is a great job and I appreciate the effect, the way your group has gone after this work and stayed the course and refiled and resubmitted and stayed with them and emailed and followed up. So this is just a great job.
Thank you. It's not just our group, it's the entire district. Multiple departments are involved in all this process as well as community members and business and philanthropy. So we appreciate everybody.
I wasn't here for the opportunity with the Midland County Commissioners Court, but I would like to thank them for their effort and, and then obviously, you know, everybody that's gave us money. Obviously, it's, uh, these are exciting times and I have no doubt that this is going to bear a lot of good fruit. So, thank you.
Thank you. So what are we going to do before September? We're kicking off key communicators again. Our school performance framework planning is deep into the work and we will take the accountability results that we just received as well as our K-12 survey data and plunk that data into the school performance framework as we build what is called a community-based accountability system that will inform our community more about our schools than just test results. Our transformation subcommittee will continue their meetings and, and start those up next week. And they will have a heavy emphasis on grant planning as well as implementing the four levers of the system of great schools. Our unified enrollment process will begin, we, we've got to establish a policy committee to review what we're doing there as we create an opportunity for families to select schools based upon the choice for what meets their child's needs. And then we will create an online dashboard for them to be informed about these opportunities for easy access as well as selection. And then, of course, one of the most important things is continued grant planning and execution of what we're doing through multiple conversations with philanthropy, business, and industry, TEA, as well as continued conversations with idea public schools and legacy traditional schools. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Ms. Cale, and congratulations on the continuation of the Transformation Zone Grant. Very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, district report, 6C, facility update. Mr. Riggan, welcome.
Good evening, President Davis, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Riddick. I'm James Riggan with Chief Operations Officer, and it is my pleasure tonight to bring to this, to bring to the trustees an update on the work of the Facility Master Planning Committee. Since January, when this committee was formed, this committee has been hard at work looking at our facilities and looking to the future for what facilities need to offer to serve our students. We have met 12 times to review data, look at, look at district reports, and, and then also tour our facilities. We have had a, I think, an outstanding attendance rate at these committee meetings with an average of about 66% attendance rate from this committee at these meetings. The work is difficult and hard with this committee and the work continues. We have reviewed existing facility conditions. We've looked at district facility needs. We've toured existing district facilities and, and we've looked at other facilities within, within our community and the state. We have reviewed and looking at our existing building capacities and what will be required for future capacities for our district. We've looked at past and projected membership to predict future student growth. One of the largest, most difficult items of our committee is to look at multiple educational models for our district. What will our district look like in 10 years from now? What will the facilities look like that will serve our district's educational needs in 10 years? This may require change in our, our, our facilities and what they currently look like. These facility models have tried to answer one main, one main question. What will need to be built in our community within the next 10 years to support and house public education in Midland? The committee has currently narrowed the discussion to a possible two educational models. And currently, the work of the committee is to look at projected cost estimates for each of these models. And we're looking at developing a timeline of providing these facilities to the committee. Again, the work of this committee is to provide a report to the board. And this report to the board is expected to be completed by this committee and brought forth to this board for their, for your review and your consideration in December. So that is where we are currently. The work continues. So we've been meeting twice a month and we will continue to do so until December. And the work is difficult, hard, with lots of good decisions being made for this district. One of the things that we have discussed in our, all our work is hinging on what are the projected student enrollments for the next 10 years. We have historical data, we have projections based on where we've been and, and growth that is expected. But we are also planning as a district to obtain proposals, to obtain a demographic study for the district, to verify our numbers with others' numbers that, that will either verify what we believe to be true for future numbers in, in the future. So that work is also ongoing. Any questions?
Is there, I know it's a lot of work and I appreciate all the work that's been done to date. Is there any reasonable chance in your mind that the committee could complete its work and make its recommendations before December? Or do you think that's a, that's a very likely ending date?
We could do that.
I don't want to rush anything, I'm just curious as to whether it's more likely than not, it will be December? Is there a reasonable chance it could be before?
If this board would like it before December, we'll make every effort to, to make that happen, yes.
No, I'm not suggesting you rush anything. If you're meeting twice a month, I'm sure you're plowing ahead. I was just wondering with those twice a month schedule whether, it doesn't sound like it's going to happen before December, but I was just curious. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Rig, I was just addressing that as being on the facilities committee, Mr. Riggan did some great work. In this last facility meeting we had, there was, kicked off some great discussion about where we are and what do we actually want to send to the board or what did they want to send to the board as, sitting on that committee? But I, I, I think that we could probably get there earlier. I think the committee would make their minds up. James and I try to not impose our decisions on it, but I think they can get there. And I, I think the committee has seen a lot of great information. And this last proposal talked about the idea of how you're breaking up schools, how you're building schools, how this district system of great schools, Mrs. Cale's work's coming in, all of that tying in together. So it says, what does MIST have to build? What's going to be built for us or help with us, partners with us? And so I think it's some great work, but I, I do think we could get there quicker. And I, I wouldn't say that without rushing you, but he, he put together a great presentation this last time that, I mean, I really saw the group start to come together focusing on the idea, now let's say, what are we going to, the question became, what are we going to propose to the board? As opposed to, we think we like what, what we see, so.
Yeah, I think if we, if we narrow our focus to those models, I think we could expedite the process.
Yes. I agree with your comments, yes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks for all the work. All right, district report, 6F, staffing update, Mr. Bailey, welcome.
Mr. Davis, Board President, Board members, Mr. Riddick, Superintendent. This is our district staffing report for this month. Of course, we are up against the first day of school and we are glad to be able to bring this report tonight. I first want to say much appreciation to one of the hardest working teams in the district, and that is the HR team that has limited time off during the summer and they've been working all summer to try to achieve some high goals. As the information that was presented to you in the board packet, you do see that with the number of vacancies that we reported at the last board meeting, we were sitting about 83%, 84%. Mr. Riddick mentioned in a meeting not long ago that he'd like for us to get to 90% and we were definitely trying to get there. You do see in the report that was presented that we are 90% staffed, we're 90% staffed actually upon reporting for, for this board meeting. Recent information of tonight is that we're at 91%. And so we have actually, we're a little bit closer, about 113 vacancies at this point in time. So as we continue to work and we look at the years past, of course, we are starting school earlier, so we have, this is a different, a short summer, and we'll continue to work over the next several weeks to try to get closer to that, that marker. We have some very innovative programs in place and things that we are trying to do to make sure that every classroom has a qualified instructor in front of students. And we also have six certified teachers that are coming to help in a temporary basis. We have five that are working towards certification, 19 that are bachelor degreed, and then we have six just long-term subs that will also be helping to ensure that we are ready for the first day of school. As we continue to look at numbers over the next several weeks, we'll be able to make adjustments across the district as we realize enrollment and it's not just projections based upon last year. If you do remember, we did add 40 new positions this year. And last year, we started school about 55 position, 55 vacant positions as well. So we're in the neighborhood, we, we've experienced a, a great transition this year, but we feel like that we are, are definitely making great strides to, to get to the place that we need to be.
So the shorter timeframe, right? We're cutting you on timeframe here, which is probably hindering the process a little bit, but so I'm saying this, I guess for our general public, that, that we moved the school year, we started early, which puts obviously more pressure on yourself and, and then obviously people, I, I don't know, it could be the possibility also that there's people not willing to, are backing. there's people not willing to, are backing out or not coming to the district due to the fact that we're starting a little earlier. Is there any of that going on that, that you think that is holding people back maybe because we started a little earlier?
I just think that we have a, a number of challenges in front of us. I believe that our local economy presents challenges. There, there's just a lot of challenges, but we're gonna do all that we can to overcome all of those challenges, and I think that we're on the right road to try to get there. We'll, we'll have to think outside of the box. I can tell you that you've heard about secondary schools and working with, with a secondary team to try to ensure that we have some certified instructors that will be coming in virtually to the classroom. And so, the structure for that program, it's, it's a little bit different, but we're still striving to make sure that we're meeting all the needs of our students. So, we have a lot of challenges, but we're gonna get there, and we feel like we're, we're on our way. Lot of hard work, but we're gonna get there.
I'm aware of one little redhead cutie that would love to have a fa, a fifth-grade math teacher at Faskin, so that would be, if anybody's out there as a math teacher, we'd love to have that. Ms. Kirk, Mr. Bailey would like to talk to you soon as the meeting's over.
I've already tried to sign her up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey, good luck. All right, next, School Security Update, Chief Barclay, welcome.
Thank you, Board President Davis, Board Trustees, and Superintendent Riddick. I'm newly-appointed Police Chief Arthur Barclay, for those of you that don't know me. As detailed in my School Security Update Report to the Board, my initial plan for the safety and security of the district focuses on recommendations detailed in the Governor Greg Abbott School and Firearms Safety Action Plan released in May of two thousand and eighteen. This action plan represents several recommendations which focus on best practices to promote a safe, secure school environment. Recommendations such as maximizing current building security measures at each campus by regulating access locations where possible. Since my appointment, each campus school resource officer has conducted detailed building security assessments on the campuses they're responsible for. These assessments will be brought to the attention of school principals to get their input and possibly make changes. Another recommendation from the Governor's Action Plan focuses on empowering all stakeholders at schools to be situationally aware on campuses. Students and faculty members should both feel responsible for reporting crime and suspicious activities on their school campuses. A mechanism should be in place so that this can be done anonymously to prevent any retaliation from occurring once these reports are made. That's something that can be done just by putting the right procedures in place. Forming multidisciplinary behavioral threat assessment teams on campuses was also recommended in the Governor's Action Plan. These teams are typically made up of school resource officers, mental health professionals, and school personnel. Behavioral threat assessment teams are geared towards identifying potential students at risk of being a danger to themselves or others in middle schools and high schools. Another action plan recommendation urges coordination and collaboration with other law enforcement agencies, first responders, to develop strong school safety programs. Agency representatives I have met with in furtherance of this recommendation since my appointment include the Midland Independent School District, I mean, Midland Police Chief Seth Herman, Juvenile Prosecutor Carolyn Thurman, Chief Juvenile Probation Officer Forrest Hannah, Midland County Sheriff's Department Lieutenant Colston, DPS Area Field Lieutenant Warren Spivey. Both Midland Police Chief Herman and DPS Lieutenant Spivey have recently agreed to commit field personnel for periodic safety checks at Midland Independent School Districts. This is something that was done in Fort Worth for a long period of time and was implemented with, under my command, and has worked well within Fort Worth in order to be able to increase the amount of officers going in and out of schools. DPS Lieutenant Spivey has also committed to a plan in which troopers will attend major school sporting events on duty to increase security personnel at these events. I will recommend that both agencies commit the majority of their building security efforts in our elementary schools, which do not have security assigned to them currently. Other agencies which are critical in the event that a joint emergency response incident occurs on a school campus, or municipal fire departments, and emergency ambulance services, efforts have been made to initiate conversations with these agencies, and results are pending in order to be able to make contact and try and determine what can be done in order to be able to find some plans that may work in case of a school incident. The Midland Independent School District Police Department currently has fifteen approved school security personnel positions. Of the fifteen positions, there are currently four vacancies. Two of the four vacancies were just approved during this budget year. The recruitment of quality applicants to fill these positions has been a challenge due to the salary being offered at other local departments being higher than what is offered here in, at Midland ISD. Midland County Sheriff's deputies are utilized to help beef up police security at football games each year, they're not utilized for any other ISD events. Because I am new to the district, I would have to monitor how crime response and school safety concerns are currently addressed with available staffing before being able to make a credible assessment regarding needing personnel increases within the district. My preliminary assessment of the district, though, based upon my current overview of what I've seen, is that school threats are increasing, and if this continues, then there needs to be more of a school presence for security officers within elementary schools, so there needs to be some type of an increase in the amount of campuses that are visited by officers, and I don't know if we can do that with the current staffing that we have. Rolling patrol units can be utilized to cover several elementary campuses under such a response plan if additional units were approved, additional positions were allowed to be placed in those positions, to an increased amount of visits that we could do to elementary schools. Increased personnel and increased access control and building monitoring technology appears to be what would offer the most security and safety benefits to the district long-term based upon my assessment. That includes my board update at this point, and I'm welcoming, any questions?
I do have a, I do have a question, I guess, and I appreciate the, the short-term work that you have put in from a security standpoint. Have we considered, I guess, when we get with possibly the, the Midland Chief of Police and possibly our lieutenant, to maybe when those officers are possibly on days off or off-duty, that they could possibly be a, a part-time help to the district from a security standpoint?
You know, that's, that is an option, you know, if they are willing to come in and work overtime, because at this point, the information that I'm getting is that DPS will come in and work on their own-duty time, so as a result, no money will be expended from the school district funds in order to be able to supplement the field units at this point, so. But it, that is an option, I'm sure, if, if we can offer them the amount of, I guess, salary that they make at DPS. The salary may become a problem, I don't know exactly what the amount is that we can offer them, but that's an option.
Okay, and I, I understand that as well, and I'm appreciative of, of them wanting to offer the help during, during the, the duties that they're on, to, to help alleviate the rise of, of our budget from a security standpoint, but just looking at options, and didn't know if you guys had looked at that as a possibility, 'cause whether we're paying, what we pay officers versus what they're making might be another, another case to look at, and maybe not having to pay as much, I guess, is what they're, based on use of experience, but I know people want to be paid for what their, what their, their collective value is. So again, I appreciate y'all's efforts.
Yes, sir.
You feel like one of your goals is to bring the, more communication with agencies? You know, as some of this, these recommendations are being made and so forth?
Right.
Because of the awareness and all that? But, it seems like in the past, a little bit, just a little bit in the past, we've had, it doesn't seem like we got the, all the agencies talking the same language, you know? So, it'd be nice to kind of get a, I'm an MISD, you know, with the, with the, with our other agencies, so, and, which I know they're on board, I mean, but I appreciate any effort in that area.
Yes, sir, I mean, I, I think it's very important that we reach out as much as possible to, you know, the local police department, a fire department, because they would be involved in any joint response that we would make to a school if there was, you know, an incident that occurred. So, the fire department is very critical to any type of a response that we would make, so we want to even actually be able to train with those units. And so far, we already trained with the Midland Police Department. We trained periodically with the DPS, we trained with Midland College, so, it's only natural that we start to train with the fire department, I think.
All right, Chief Barclay, we look forward to your completion of your assessment. As you know, we were excited to receive an award from the Midland County Commissioners' Court, and those monies, some of which are available to be used for enhancement of security costs, so we look forward to your assessment and any recommendations you have on, on how some of those monies may be spent for that purpose, so, thank you very much. Appreciate your work. All right, next, District Report 6H, Bullying Committee Update, Ms. Moore, welcome.
Good evening, Board President Davis, Board of Trustee Members, Superintendent Riddick, excuse me. My name is Teresa Moore, and I'm the Executive Director of Student Services, and the report that I bring to you tonight is a reflection of the work to date of the committee to review the Midland ISD policies and procedures as they relate to bullying. I have some members of our committee here with us tonight, and I'd like to introduce those members to you. Our co-chair is Joelle Bracken, and she's right here. Our director, and, may I just do this so y'all can see a little bit better, our Director of Guidance and Counseling, Mr. Ron Moss. We have one of our principals, Jennifer Jones, in the back. We have another one of our principals, I don't, I don't know if I still see her, but maybe I'm just missing her, Stephanie Carnet, she's on the, on the committee as well. Chief Barclay is on the committee. And then we have one of our community members here this evening, Mr. Clint Williamson, so we're very happy to have him here. So we wanted to take a moment to introduce those members to everyone.
Thank you all, thanks for serving, appreciate it.
To date, we, the committee has met three times, and you'll see those dates that we've met. We have another meeting scheduled for later in August, and at that time we'll set the remainder of our meetings through the first semester. So our, our work has taken us through three meetings so far. The topics that we've discussed have centered around some, some urgent topics. For example, what programs we can implement immediately to prevent bullying. We've had discussions regarding the definition that not only the, the district uses, but other entities may use to define bullying. We've had conversations on additional definitions with regard to, to some of those more subjective terms such as reasonable or empathy, what exactly an imbalance of power might ma, mean. We, we haven't exactly come to conclusions on all these discussions, these are ongoing. We've had conversations regarding how we record and document our bullying investigations, where we would hang on to the records, training for personnel, and then monitoring students for patterns of behavior. Further topics considered were how to involve our parents and, and keep those, our parents in the loop with regard to, from the beginning with the report all the way through the, to the conclusion of the investigation, how our counselors should be involved, as well as information on how to conduct unbiased investigations as well. So, from those three meetings, we've, we've done a lot of research, and we've, and we've talked for, for a long time with regard to some recommendations that we would like to bring forth to you this evening. Those three recommendations are outlined on this slide, and they include using as a district an app-based tool for both anonymous and non-anonymous reporting of bullying and other behaviors such as any sort of drug use, inappropriate behaviors by, by, by anyone who may be on our campuses, any suspicious persons. So there are a couple of nationally-recognized products that the committee has considered. We've also given that information to our campus administrators, and all of that information with regard to an app-based reporting tool was well-received by our campus administrators. This, the, the tool that we are considering would allow almost instant communication between the person making the report and the person receiving the report. These apps are customizable so that you can select who would receive those reports. Should I pause for some questions on that one?
Is there a cost associated with the app?
Yes, sir, there, there is a cost associated, and, and we are studying the possibility of funding that app with our title for federal funds, and the actual title of that escapes me right now, but those funds are required to be used for safety and security as well as some other educational measures, so we believe those funds might be appropriate for this particular endeavor.
And, and if the district were to purchase the app, then that would be free of charge to parents and students to utilize that app, is that correct?
Absolutely, sir, they would. Parents and students would download the app, and then they would be able to access the, the utilization of that app by entering a school code. And so that school code would kind of attach that person using the app with the group that would receive those reports.
How, how is it, how do you keep using the app? How do you know that, I guess, technology, but how do you know that the person is here locally, or, you know, that's doing the reporting? That it's not some random person somewhere making reports?
Because when, when the, let's say, for example, I am a student at Midland High. I would download the app on my device or my tablet, or I can access it from a, a regular computer, and then before I could send or receive any messages, I must enter a school code that's provided by the school. So, so not, the whole world wouldn't be able to make a report for us, it would be specific to that student in that school.
And how would the code be, is it posted, or do they have to call the district?
The, the, the campus would provide that, the access code to the parents and students of that school.
Okay.
So, so I suppose it is possible for, for some outside person to obtain those codes, but we would, we would do our best to, to make sure that we limited that information.
Okay.
I guess, Ms. Moore, one of the, one of the questions I, I'd like to bring up, in our last school board we had for the Summer Leadership Conference in, in Fort Worth that I attended, Keller ISD done a presentation on bullying, on how they, how they've handled it, and they've got a, out there on their website, they've got a, a ton of information on how they've handled bullying over the last five to ten years, if you will, and I'm not saying that they have it mastered, but I think they had some, some key information, I think that would be beneficial to our district, what, without us having to go through and reinvent the wheel.
Absolutely.
It could possibly be a, be a saving to the district on the title money that you're talking about to maybe utilize in another area, so, I mean, if we could do that, and maybe if, with Mr. Riddick's guidance, maybe yourself and a couple of others from the committee might have an opportunity to go down and, and visit with him. I did visit with him after the course, and they, they welcomed us to call them and their officer as well, Mr. Clay, so, I think that, that opens opportunities for us to learn from other people that might have seen some, some situations that we might not have encountered yet that might be a, a good, good measure for us.
Absolutely, because we, we, that is one thing that we have done in our committees, we've tried to, to research best practices so that we're not doing, just like you said, reinventing the wheel, so we'll absolutely reach out to Keller and look at, at what they have and hopefully learn some things from them. Thank you, thank you for that.
Is the fee a one-time fee for the purchase of it? Or is there a fee every time someone uses it?
No, sir, it, it's just an annual fee. So we would purchase the use of the app for one school year, and we would evaluate its effectiveness at the end of that, of that term.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Thank you. The second recommendation for the, from the committee, we did hear, and we, we've heard it from our own personnel, and we've heard it from community, that we need to improve our our uniformity with regard to training our staff and ensuring our staff understands the characteristics of bullying and how it can impact our students. So again, we have researched a commercially-based product that is endorsed by the Texas Association of School Boards to provide an online training course that we would ask that all of our staff, and by all, we mean all, of our staff would view that, that training course. It comes with an assessment at the end to evaluate the participant's understanding of that.
How far along are we?
I'm sorry, sir?
How far along are we on that process?
We are ready to move forward with these items after this presentation this evening.
How many staff have already been trained?
This past week, at Elevate, I held two sessions with this information. So they were attended, and they were full sessions. They were not in large venues, but they were full sessions. And then we've also had two sessions with all of our campus administrators as an initial piece to training.
Will that filter down to teachers?
Yes, sir. And we are hoping with the second recommendation, the purchase of the training products, it is trackable so that every campus administrator can keep up with who has completed that course and ensure that everyone has. The principal supervisor can track and make sure the principal has done it, and all the way up. So we would all be accountable in one way or another to ensure that we view that, that information. We would roll out a timeline for campus staff and staff in the district. We would say it's available starting here, and our expectation is that everyone would have completed that by a particular date. That wouldn't be overly burdensome, but give everybody plenty of time.
That timeline, will we be able to do that and get, really be prepared not to go into deeper into a year, but have all that done early in a year?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That is, the desire of the committee is to move forward with this as quickly as possible. And to have that done very early in the first semester. Yes, sir.
We'll be presenting to principals at our first principals' meeting, all this information. They've got the precursor during our Elevate time. We'll be introducing this, and we want to do it well. So we want to be sure that everybody's trained well during that time. And then it will be integrated down to the teaching and staff level so that we're able to take the utilization of the training tool. That expands not just bullying, but goes into a lot of areas that other departments can use for verification of teacher notification around trainings that are required by us through the state, and trainings that we want our team to go after that are embedded within the product.
Yes. There's a, just for the behavioral-emotional piece, there's probably 15 to 20 courses that we believe would be beneficial to our staff.
I guess one other thing, is there any way, I'm sure there is, but with Tazby, with our Tazby lawyers every year at our school board convention, they do, they do a role play in an enactment of some of the behaviors. So you have younger teachers and experienced teachers. Some of them might not recognize when something's actually taking place, even if it's right there in front of their eyes. So, and I don't know if that's something to maybe think about or consider going forward. I know it can't happen today or tomorrow, but maybe in the very near future where people recognize those type of behaviors and then be able to document and maybe prevent it from happening and going on at a later time.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. The third recommendation that we bring for you today, and I believe that it is included as an attachment, and it's a draft. If you will recall, the last time we shared information with all of you regarding bullying, we went over the checklist that our school district currently uses. So the one that's provided for you is a draft, and we hope that it's a little bit more detailed and a little bit simpler for our campus administrators to follow when making the determination that a student's behavior may meet the definition of bullying. So again, it's still in draft, and we are still refining it. We've gotten some input from, again, our campus principals. We presented that at the Elevate Academic Summit last week, and we're getting input from our administrators on even better ways to make that a useful tool.
Is this in guidance with the, with the draft from TEA?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's aligned with that. It just offers a couple of little different things for our principals to use as reminders when making those considerations.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
In your rectangle on your header, should that read, "Is it one or more?" Is that your draft?
Yes. Yes, I apologize for that. Again, it's a draft, and we are still working to revise it. Are there any other questions about that one? Our next steps, we're going to continue to meet regularly. We're developing a survey to send out to all of our campuses to gauge what our campuses are doing, because we do believe that we've got lots of places where we've got lots of wonderful things happening. And so we want to utilize our in-house talent and maximize on that. So we're going to send a survey to campuses to get a better understanding of what they are doing and how well it's working, so that we can spread that out to other campuses. We are still in the stages of finalizing the bullying checklist, and then again, we're going to develop that and implement that training plan for all of our staff, starting with that online, or the video training component that we mentioned earlier. Just to recap our training, I did present this information, our board policies on bullying, our bullying checklist, our responsibilities for investigation and reporting and taking action on that to all of our new teachers at New Teacher Orientation. We made presentations at Elevate. And then Ms. Rivera has sessions already planned for our campus administrators and other staff members to go through throughout the course of the year to become better equipped and understand and implement restorative practices within our classroom, classrooms, excuse me. And that concludes our presentation and our update. I don't know if any of the committee members have anything that they would like to share, if you've got any questions for any of those, any of those members, or if I can answer any other questions at this time.
I'd like to thank everyone for doing the hard work and being a member. As you realize, it's a lot of stuff. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Moore. Thanks to the committee and all their work. All right, next, district report, six H, school quality and climate surveys. Ms. Cale, welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you for having me back. In relation to the survey, as you saw in your packet, it is multiple pages long with a lot of information about cumulative results from the surveys that were handled on all of our campuses. I want to give you just an update about what is happening, or what has happened with that information. Our campus executive directors worked with campus principals to analyze each of their campus survey results and look at the data from a variety of lenses that could push the campus to really look toward concentrated actions that they could embed into their campus improvement plan to improve overall staff, parent, and quality for students. They looked, they focused on three high and low areas, as well as looking at trends across their survey results. Our full objective within the campus surveys is to close the perceptual gap between our students, staff, and parents in relation to the results, to have qualitative data to support decision-making toward improving the instructional and cultural climate of the campus. We also received verbatim responses from each of the campus surveys, and each of the campuses are able to go in and look at that information and analyze what can be done with that information. And then also, the information from this data will be used to populate our school performance framework for that component of the work. Other than that, if you have any specific questions, I'll be happy to go over them. We can look at the highest and lowest ranking indicators, which start on page 32 of the PowerPoint, or we can go into questions, whatever the will of the board.
My question is, I've, you know, I've turned to the Key Insights page, in which they make a number of recommendations on, they note discrepancies where they exist, significant ones, and suggest that, make suggestions that things need to be done to narrow the gaps that exist, and the perceptions and discrepancies that exist. What is the plan going forward to, is there a plan going forward to implement those suggestions? And if so, how?
As far as the campuses, they will be looking at that information and significantly embedding that information into their campus improvement plans. As far as the district, we looked at where we were last time we did this versus the similarities that we saw this time, and are looking at how that can be embedded into the district improvement plan as far as actionable items toward improvement.
And who, who will be responsible for following up with the campuses to make sure that they do take steps to do as has been suggested?
That will most likely fall onto teaching and learning and campus executive directors.
And you anticipate that, that specific, that when they do so, that the specific plans on how to implement these suggestions will be incorporated into a school or a campus improvement plan?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Other questions?
Let me ask, did we, go ahead. I'm sorry. Did we, I know there's a cost associated with this, so do we plan on doing this again next year?
Yes, sir. Because this will be an annual item.
Okay.
At the very least, biannual, because it will also be feeding data into our school performance framework.
So then that gives an ED the ability to determine if a campus is paying attention to what's being said and making changes? Because if they see the same repetitive answers, then they know it's not been, no one's paid attention to it?
Yes, sir. We'll have annual comparative data available.
Okay.
Yes.
So it's, just to be correct, is staff taking, staff supposed to take this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I want to make a comment about adult behavior, because I looked at, I looked at some of the numbers, you know. So I was a bit disappointed that adult behavior hasn't changed, because nobody took it, or maybe I'm reading it wrong.
62% of our staff participated.
But there were some campuses that showed low. So my message to the campuses, I'm not going to mention them, but they're, you know, that tells me that you're not being part of the team type deal, you know? And it could have been, you know, I know we have some changing going on, but still, you know, that's, that's one of the biggest deals in our district, is that adult behavior will change in order for student outcomes to change.
Yes, sir.
And so, if you could just kind of relay that message.
Yes, sir.
I think one of the things that we have to work on is getting our campuses to understand the value of things that we're bringing to them that help triangulate a lot of the information from what a teacher might feel, what a student feels, what a principal feels, and what we may be getting through third-party or through conversations. And pulling all that data and information together, the more people who take the survey and find value in taking a survey, because we may have saturated our, our community with surveys. And so finding value in this survey, and then utilizing it as an active tool, much like what Trustee Murray said, that we're able to come in and then do, do active work around the things that we're seeing. Why do students say that they feel this way? Why are teachers saying that they feel that way? Why there's, is there maybe a disparity between how they think about an aspect of school, where teachers think high, students think low? Why are we, how are we infusing that into our regular campus work? I agree. The more people that take this survey brings more information to the table, especially as we're hearing things from certain campuses that begin to emerge. This is another way where they can report and give us information that allows us to dive deeper.
And you made reference to it. I guess another motivating factor, hopefully a motivating factor to address these issues will be that you anticipate this type of information to be incorporated into the school performance framework criteria by which we're going to ourselves, as a MISD and a community, grade our campuses, if you will.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
And so for those that want to do well, they will, they will need to pay attention to these items, as that will be included as part of their school performance framework criteria. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or anything? All right. Thank you, Ms. Cale.
Thank you.
All right. Now turning to our discussion action items. Seven A, adopt the tax rate. That information is on page, begins on page 303 of our board packet. Ms. Moss, welcome back.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, earlier during our financial update, we discussed the tax rate and the calculations thereof. If there are no further questions in regard to that, administration recommends approval of the ordinance setting the total tax rate for 2018-19 to $1.12. That's 1.12005. The rate for maintenance and operations is 1.04005, and the rate for interest and sinking is .08. It does require specific language for the motion as well.
And that language is on page 303 of our board packet.
Do I move?
Well, you've got to read it.
Oh.
Okay. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of $1.12005 per 100 valuation, which is effectively a 9.4 increase in the tax rate. This tax rate will raise more taxes for maintenance and operation than last year's tax rate.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Marquez. Any discussion, or further discussion than we've already had, or questions that we already had? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Moss. All right, next, action item seven B, approve district teaching permits. Mr. Bailey, welcome back. The information begins on page 305 of our board packet.
Board President, Board members, this action item is in accordance with DBA legal policy that the district may issue a school district teaching permit and employ as a teacher a person who does not hold a teaching certificate as permitted by Texas law for non-core academic career and technology, technical education courses. And there are two recommendations.
Move for Boo.
Motion by Mr. Fuller, second by Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. Next, action item seven C, approve certified appraisers for the 2018-19 school year.
In accordance with local policy, the district shall appraise teachers using the Texas Teacher Evaluation and Support System, which is known as TTEST. And in accordance with law and administrative regulation and the board, it's to approve a list of certified appraisers who can appraise a teacher in the place of the teacher supervisor, and we're presenting the entire list of certified appraisers.
I've got a question. So is the, the statement, appraise a teacher in place of the teacher supervisor, so is that to, to help the administrator of the campus process that?
There's a provision.
To take the load off of them? Or is...
Not necessarily. There's a provision that if a teacher has a question about their appraisal, that they can actually request a second appraisal, appraisal by another appraiser. And so this list, they can request that they receive an appraisal from another certified appraiser that's been through the training.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions? Motion by Mr. Marquez, second by Mr. Fuller. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. All right. Again, Mr. Bailey, it's action item seven D, unfortunately, teacher contract abandonment. One, good cause did not exist for resignation. And two, complaint and request for sanctions to TEA regarding Dee Pinnard.
Board members, we do have two employees to present tonight that did not present just cause for resignation after the penalty-free period.
The first is concerning Dee Pinnard. Motion by Mr. Marquez, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. And next concerns the same matter, teacher contract abandonment, good cause did not exist for resignation, and a complaint and request for sanction to TEA regarding C Richmond. Motion by Mr. Marquez, second by Mr. Fuller. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. All right. Next is action item 7F, discussion and possible approval of order and notice of regular trustee election for districts three, five, and six for November 6, 2018. The information begins on page 321 of our board packet.
It's interesting you're presenting.
I'm not, there's no presenter listed.
There is a presenter.
Oh, Leah, okay. All right. Let's see, the first, the first item would be the motion approving the order calling the 2018 trustee election for trustee districts three, five, and six. Motion by Mr. Marquez, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. And we also, I'm not entirely sure, but I think, I'd like also us to approve the early voting and election day voting locations as described on page 322 and 323 of our board Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Marquez. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. All right. Next, action item 7G, application for inaugural membership into the Lone Star Governance Exemplar cohort, page 326. I am the presenter on this one.
Do we need to also, regular voting day, election day?
Well, well, I, that was included in, in what I was, yeah. And now, all of those matters are also, it may have been built in suspenders, but it's also in the resolution we're going to sign. Okay. This information begins on page 326. As you know, we were among the very first school boards to go through Lone Star Governance. And we're currently ranked number one on the TA leaderboard for that. TA has recently announced that they're going to accept letters of interest for school boards interested in becoming one of 12 school boards to be part of the first inaugural cohort of Lone Star Governance Exemplar. It's designed for high-performing local governing teams, both the school board members and superintendents that want to continue honing their intense focus on one primary objective, improving student outcomes. Requires, requires an application to be submitted by the end of this month. Requires attendance at Lone Star Governance Workshop with our fellow, with all of us. Requires monthly board, board chair superintendent and implementation support, quarterly self-evaluation support, which we already do each quarter. We need, it requires all statually required board member trainings, which we do already. And it helps support district-level distinction and exemplary governance on the A through F report card and, and the Texas Academic Performance Report. Also, it gives us early access to Lone Star Campus and discipline trainings. And it also allows us to collaborate, learn from, and help, and perhaps help others, other school boards be high-performing. I would recommend that we make this application and dedicate ourselves to this effort. Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Bishop.
I, just want to, just want to comment that, I said it earlier, but Lone Star Governance has been an awesome guiding tool. And the sole goal of it is to improve student outcomes. And so, they're improving and we look forward to continuing doing the work. And I'm extremely proud to be part of this board because of this work. And so, I'd like to thank all my board members for putting in the time to, to go through this work. And obviously, also the district for putting their time in and influence and, and guidance also as to how to guide some of this work. So, it's a team effort. But I'm extremely proud that, that I'm part of this work. It's, it's really amazing that we're here meddling or leading probably the state and probably our surrounding states. So, just extremely proud about, about that work. So.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Marquez.
Since our vote to approve includes, including you, are you, have anything to add to the comment, the discussion on it, Mr. Riddick?
No. I would say I'm glad that we're, I'm glad that we're pursuing this and moving down this pathway and conversations with A.J. Crevel, Deputy Commissioner for the Texas Education Agency. He values the work that we're putting in and it's continuous work of what we're already doing. And to show ourselves as an exemplar pushes us even further. Sets up the standards that we want to do with a workshop to go through the year's work to assess where we are around our general, our goal progress measures and our constraint progress measures as well. It pushes us even further along. So, I'm glad we're going down this pathway.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Ready for the vote? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Riddick, I will, I will attempt to fill out the application as best I can and send you my best efforts. And then, if there are any blanks, I'd ask you to help me fill them in and then we'll turn it in timely.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. It is now 8:17 PM and we'll now go into closed session in accordance with Government Code Sections 551.001, 551.071 through .074, .076, .0821 through .084. Thank you very much. It is 11:08 PM and we are emerging from closed session to take up the next, to take up action item number nine, action arising from closed session, 9A Superintendent Evaluation.
I'd like to move that we extend Mr. Riddick's contract for another year on top of the two that are remaining.
All right. Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Marquez. Any discussion or questions? All right. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Riddick. All right. It is now 11:09 PM and we are adjourned. Thank you.